In cafeteria. This meeting will be held in person and per the governor's executive order twenty-one dash ninety-seven, masks must be worn. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. We apologize for the delayed start. Our previous meeting ran late. And for the record, Mr. DeMonica and Mr. Fiorello are not present tonight. We have an item on the agenda of to vote or approve our updated twenty-two-one, twenty-two school safety plans. And we actually would like to amend the agenda so that we discuss that before the public comments. And so before we approve the agenda, I want to see if we would like to amend the agenda.
Motion to agenda.
Okay.
Amend the agenda?
Mrs. Feather makes a motion to amend the agenda to move item new business, item B, to before the public comments. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski and Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. So we just amended the agenda, and now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the student government report. And we have the class of twenty-two president, Jack Proctor, and vice president Andrew Maston to give us an update on student activities. You can come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Hello, all. My name is Jack Proctor, and I am the senior class president.
Hello, my name is Andrew Maston, and I am the senior class vice president.
I just wanted to say we are all so glad to be back in school. We have been doing a great job following all the safety protocols while in the school. So far, we have been mainly focused on organizing our spirit week, which will be held the week of Columbus Day. We have decided on our themes and event days. On Tuesday, our theme is America Day, and the event is Boys and Girls Powder Puff. Wednesday, our theme is Pink Out to Support Breast Cancer Awareness, and the event is Lip Sync, which will be done virtually. Thursday's theme is Class Colors Day, and the event is Class Clash, which will be held on Tucker Field. On Friday, our theme is Neon, and the event during the school day is the pep rally, which will be held at Tucker for juniors and seniors. There will be a live stream during the pep rally for all students and teachers who will not be attending. Friday night will be the homecoming football game, and as a captain of the team, I hope to see you all there. Today, we held our freshman class elections, and we are very excited to see who the new leaders of the class of twenty-two-five will be.
I just have a few more announcements about student government and what we have planned in the near future. So Mr. Curran is back for his third year as our advisor, and we are excited to announce our new co-advisor, Ms. Rowe, who both have been working wonderfully together as we are finally back to school. Student government will be organizing a trunk or treat. We'll be inviting all of the community to come trick-or-treating in a safe environment out of the cars in the back parking lot of the high school. We are also going to be doing the turkey basket filler truck, will be parked at Tucker, and will be headed back to our local supermarkets to collect our turkeys, canned goods, and more. That's all we have for now. Thank you for your time. Jack and I, as well as all of the Cumberland High School student government, hope everyone has a safe and fun school year. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Thanks, Andrew. And a reminder to students to buy your T-shirts by tomorrow for our spirit week, or anyone else who wants a T-shirt, I think. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes from the regular meeting nine-nine twenty-two-one. Item B, approval of minutes from the executive session nine-nine twenty-two-one. Do I have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Approve. Thank you, Mrs. Rogalski. Motion to approve. Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. Next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Dunkinson, thank you.
I have a few announcements tonight. First, for unpaid leave of absence, Eva LaVassar, paraprofessional at BF Norton. I have six appointments. Jaclyn DePoint, DePoint, paraprofessional at North Cumberland Middle School. Cara Desert, special ed teacher at McCourt, one year. Lisa Luttrano, reading specialist at North Cumberland Middle School, one year. Kelly Marzini, paraprofessional at Community. Georgia Nassimiento, custodian in the Wellness Center. John Russo, ELA Essentials, one year. I believe that's at North Cumberland Middle School as well. I have two resignations. Gina Miller, academic coach at BF Norton, and Beth Stevenson, EL teacher at McCourt. And then two coaching appointments. Natalie Cunningham, girls JV tennis, and Caitlin Marino, cross-country assistant North Cumberland Middle School. Both of those coaches are new to the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. Next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting on nine-twenty-three twenty-two-one. Report out of executive session votes. We did not take any votes. And the next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes?
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Feather?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report with one item on it, appointment of school committee fiscal management subcommittee chair. So Mr. DeMonica has served as our fiscal management subcommittee chair for several years now, and due to some personal reasons, he has asked to step down from that. And I am pleased tonight to appoint Mr. Collins as the new chair of the fiscal management subcommittee. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, good evening. First up, we have some exciting news. As you see in the audience, we have Ashton Elementary here this evening. Ashton is the proud recipient of a blue ribbon. It's a big deal. In twenty-twenty, there are around one hundred and thirty-one thousand public schools K-12 in our nation. Only three hundred and twenty-five are getting the award. I'm taking a second to call on our math expert, Mr. Pignano. How small a number is that?
I think it's two-one-thousandths.
So two-one-thousandths. So no, truly amazing, the hard work there over the years is truly inspirational. And I just want to commend the team and having this Carbonicon team come up and say a few words. But before you do, we have to give a big round of applause.
It is an honor to be recognized as National Blue Ribbon School. I'm very proud of the faculty, students, and everyone in the Ashton community. This recognition belongs to the teachers for their hard work and commitment to our students, to our students for always doing the best work, and to our families for their support and partnership. Ashton School is among three hundred and twenty-five schools selected nationwide this year and one out of three selected and being recognized here in our state. We're specifically recognized for our exemplary work in closing the achievement gaps. This means students in our subgroups, ELL, special education, and even in regular education, made exemplary growth when compared to others within the same academic profile within the nation. So how were we selected? State assessment data was used to compare students around the schools in the nation. There was no nomination from our superintendent, from RIDE, or from principals. Once school was selected based on data, the Department of Education in Washington asked each school to complete an application. The application was a big deal. It had a lot of self-reflection. It included a lot of questions for us to discuss practices and the systems that we have established within the school to support our students. In the application process, we were asked to share our story. How do we become, how do we become a National Blue Ribbon School? So what is our story? We did a lot of thinking. We looked at what we had in place, and here's what we came up with. If you've ever been to Ashton School, you may have noticed there's a great sense of community where everyone prides themselves in being part of the Ashton family. We foster a positive, caring learning environment for our students, and there's a true partnership between our faculty, our students, and our families. We have highly dedicated teachers and staff who work hard each day to share a common goal, and that goal is always to improve student achievement. Teachers demonstrate fidelity to the curriculum. They work closely with their colleagues to enhance the core. They share resources. They provide high-quality instruction. They participate in curriculum mapping sessions, attend PD activities, and collaborate with each other frequently to review data and make decisions around that data. At the start of each year, we discuss our district goals. We discuss our school goals, and teachers create their own individual professional goals. This process is important to us because it keeps us focused and grounded in our work. We continue to grow and improve as a school together. Over the past years, we have worked to implement a comprehensive support system for our students. This system is known as the multi-tiered system of support, also called MTSS. Through this system, students receive the targeted interventions they need to be successful academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. There are three key teams within our school that are active modeling the system. The building level team reviews school-wide data. We analyze state assessment data such as RICOs, SurveyWorks. In addition, we look at our benchmarking data. We create SMART goals to address specific needs or areas, problem areas within the school. This is looking at multiple grades, one grade, or just issues within the school community. Our target team meets weekly to discuss individual students who need support due to the lack of progress. We problem-solve and create individual support plans for students, which are reviewed every six to eight weeks to track progress. A final team is our PBIS team, who keeps a pulse on the school climate. They set clear expectations for our students. They plan school-wide activities and incentives that promote a positive school culture. The work of each team is important and relies on the input and collaboration between teachers, parents, and students. Our school is synced with the district's mission and vision. We share the same goals as the district, which has resulted in the support and resources, and increased resources for all involved. Teachers have been empowered in the process to enhance the curriculum. They're receiving targeted professional development. There's an increased collaboration between grade levels, district-wide, and increased resources. We're on a good path to do great things, and this recognition validates our work. The work of the teachers is never-ending, and it's exhausting. But Ashton teachers are resilient, and each day they stand in front of our students and do their best work, and they perform magic. They teach. I'm very proud of our teachers and our district for the growth we have made over the years under the direction of Mr. D'Amanna, our former superintendent, Mr. Mitchell, and our current superintendent, Dr. Thornton. I feel this recognition belongs to all of us, but in particular, I do want to recognize our Ashton teachers for their dedication and hard work. Teachers, would you please stand up? Thank you for allowing us to share our story, and thank you for the recognition.
So, Nidia, what's next?
What's next? We have a big celebration coming up for the school as a school community. We want to engage our students in the process. We want to engage our families. So on Monday, we'll be celebrating school-wide. We'll start with a big announcement. We'll have a school dance with every student dancing in the classroom. We're going to have a staff lunch. We're going to be having students create ribbons that we're going to be hanging in a bulletin board where the students get to share their own story of why they think Ashton is special to them and why we are where we are today. We also are having the PTO, having treats for the teachers, and are getting involved also celebrating with us as part of the community. And finally, we have a team, Dr. Thornton, one of the teachers from the school improvement team, or the building level data team, and myself, will be going to Washington to receive the recognition at the beginning of November, and will come back to the school to share our, you know, our plaque and good news with them.
Thank you. Once again, well done.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, next up on the agenda for me, out-of-state travel quarantine update. As you saw last week in an email from my office, we did make a modification to the travel quarantine. In talking to Rideau and Ride, we had a conversation around the CDC guidance, which talked about not leaving the state and how that may be kind of a problem living in Rhode Island. And we came to the place of my last week's email talking about the New England region. And if you leave the New England region, that is when you would have the protocol kick in for unvaccinated to enter the testing protocol. So I just want to update you, that went out last Friday. And, you know, since this time, I haven't had many items come to my desk regarding travel quarantine, whereas before this, I had more in terms of folks going to Attleboro, folks going, you know, to the Cape. And so this, I think, maybe makes it a little better for folks to navigate. So that's the update on that. Next up, transportation update. I think we have some pluses and some things to work on still. Last time we were here, we talked about bus seven being problematic. Bus seven, I believe, as last I checked, is now on time. They did modify the route and made some other tweaks, so that has been fixed. We're still looking at bus forty-two having some challenges. I think there are a few other buses, like thirty-six I have to look at. So we are working with Durham almost daily on working the problem of bus routes and trying to get them more on time. The changes in traffic pattern at the high school, the bridge with the students walking has helped tremendously. I think we still have a little work to do. Our biggest challenge right now, as you have heard, I believe, is just securing enough bus monitors. It's not just Cumberland, it's all around. Right now, we're ten-point-five monitors short. And we did get one new monitor today at around eleven o'clock from Durham to go on bus nineteen, so that's one more to solve that problem. But we're still looking for another ten and a half. And we have advertised, we're advertising again, you know, trying all kinds of ideas on how to solve the problem. So that's the update on that. I know also we are asking Durham to continue work on BF. The idea was modeling transporting students at Carr's Garage North, and they're still modeling that. One idea they were having was a D-Bo stop at In-N-Out to solve that problem. But in the end, they'll probably come back to you in a couple of weeks, and that could be a couple of bus ads for the BF conversation. So that's still in the works. Mr. Chandler and I got a copy last week of Versatran. That's their computer software. We now have a bug still to fix, I believe, to get it up and actually, you know, see it. But I'm hoping in our next meeting, we can have that up and running and really see the routes. And that kind of, I think seeing the routes helps us kind of just, you know, problem solve. So that's the transportation update as I have it right now. And if you have any ideas or things you want me to work on during the course of the week of certain routes you're hearing about that are not, you know, on time or problematic, please let me know, and we'll add that to our list of routes. Next, we have just a quick announcement, just the flu vaccine clinics. That's flu, right? October twelfth, Tuesday, four to seven p.m. Monday, October twenty-fifth, four to seven p.m. And Wednesday, November seventeen, four to seven p.m. So we'll certainly get that out on the website and get that to parents in an email, but that is the flu clinic schedule coming up. Next up, as you know, the governor did extend the executive order. It goes till October sixteen, and at that point, you know, we will see, you know, what happens from the state level. Right now, the mask mandate is in place till October sixteen. So as you know from our policy, should there be a lapse, and that would just go to our policy where I could then continue the masking or not, you know, go to the committee for their next meeting to take an action. So that's where we are on that. And per our last meeting, the committee wanted the sheet per last year, sharing the case numbers. And you can see it by school and number of positive cases. Forty-one total for students right now. Positive staff, we have six. Number of students in quarantine, two-ninety-two. Adults in quarantine, two. And but also, as you know, this can change almost hourly. We had a situation late afternoon, BF Norton, grade one. I believe that's part of the numbers here, but grade one, the entire group now will be quarantined. And the good news there would be the teacher can instruct the kids still, you know, from the classroom, and all the students have devices, so they can get instruction that way. But that is something that's happening. I can tell you, the superintendent's association has been talking to Rideau around how we do a protocol for quarantining in classrooms versus how it works on buses. And the current question we have is, is the bus quarantine protocol overreaching? And by that, I mean, if you have a student positive on a bus, right now, we're quarantining two seats in front, two in back, a couple aside, and we're not seeing many positive COVID cases come out of those quarantines. So we're trying to, we're wondering, are we overdoing it on that protocol? So we're asking Rideau that question. That was brought up this week. So we'll keep adding to the list and have a column at the bottom going down for a running tally each week as you had last year, and, you know, we'll keep sharing that with you. Other than that, school construction update, just three pieces. We did have our team meeting today with the vendor and our OPM and our architect. We are looking still for a goal of middle of October to finish the office spaces for the transbuilding for Cumberland Hill. So nurses' office and the admin office for Cumberland Hill will actually be in their new home. So that's exciting news. We're thinking a couple of weeks for that. If you do want a tour of Cumberland Hill, the footprint of the new wing is there. So they dug the hole, if you will. You can see a large rectangle of a hole, and they're starting the foundation of the new wing at Cumberland Hill. And also a lot of open space right now, a lot of, it's kind of demoed. You can walk through if you want with me and see the space as it looks right now, but it's exciting to see that. And last piece, if you are looking for administration, as you know, last meeting, you approved the work up in upstairs again. Admin now is what I call the field office, so they're spread out in the gymnasium. It's working quite well so far. So we have HR, we have finance, we have special education, so we're all in the gymnasium spread out, but it is working fine. So that, Madam Chair, is my update at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and congratulations again to Ashton School and Nidia, the staff, everyone. That, you know that that doesn't happen by accident. It happens through lots of dedication and focus and data-driven decision-making and everybody working together. So congratulations again. What an achievement. The next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. And the first one is fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. The fiscal management subcommittee met this evening. We had no monthly business report. We had no payment of bills, but we do have eight, nine resolutions, pardon, that were presented, eight of which made it through subcommittee, which we will be voting on later this evening. So it's very, very eventful.
Thank you. And next is the policy and procedures subcommittee update. And Ms. Smith, I think you're speaking on behalf of the committee tonight? Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the policy and procedures subcommittee met this past Tuesday, and we also met the week before in a special meeting related just to transportation. So we do have some updated policies and new reading of policy that'll be coming up later in the agenda. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is achievement and communications subcommittee update. And the subcommittee did meet on Tuesday night with one main topic of meeting the new high school curriculum coordinator, Melissa Kuznetz, and she gave us an update on her new role and her priorities and the great amount of work ahead in looking at implementing new curricula, assessing lots of data, and, you know, a multi-year plan on looking at how we pull all that together for our high school students. So that was very exciting. Yeah, Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry, and I just want to add that we also, after years of talking about it, we're, we finally have kind of a plan to address data-driven AP improvement as well. She's eager to get started, and I was very, very pleased to hear what she had to say.
Next item on the agenda is district health and wellness subcommittee update. Mrs. Rogalski?
Thank you. The district health and wellness committee will be meeting Thursday at four o'clock. I'm actually really excited because one of the things we're going to be discussing is the new Rhode Island farm-to-school pilot project that we have signed on to do. So we're going to be getting some information about that from Shauna Spillane and from Karen Wetherell from Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. So that should be really neat to hear.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing. Item A, reading of amended policies. Item one, E-two transportation policy. Item two, B-three meeting procedures and election of officers. So that's the reading of amended policies. And the next item is B, reading of new policies. The first reading, item one, J-twenty-seven extracurricular immunization requirements for out-of-state travel, which, and item two, G-twenty-one non-contracted slash at-will employees. Both of these, all of these items will be coming up later in the agenda. So we're just reading these into the record tonight. And there is a public comment at this, at this point, which is related specifically to any of these policies. So if anyone would like to speak on any of these policies during public comments, you can come up to the microphone now. Okay. All right. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the one that we amended our agenda on, which is under new business, item B, vote to approve updated twenty-two-one, twenty-two school safety plans. And we wanted to speak, Dr. Thornton will speak specifically about an incident that happened today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As this is timely, early this morning, we did receive a vague threatening message regarding the high school. So the admin team and Cumberland Police did take action, and we did come on the scene. I can tell you, the system in place did work really well. In the end, we did locate the individual that did write the note. I wanted to let you also know that we always look at these things in an after-action report kind of way and see how we can improve things. And one thing we did see is now that we have two schools on campus, we did communicate to the high school families and staff late morning, but we did our communication to the Cumberland Hill staff later afternoon. So in hindsight, we really have to be simultaneous in our communications of both schools. So that's, I think, something we learned today. But once again, as troubling as these situations are, the system worked really well today. The Cumberland PD and admin were a great team, and we actually, you know, had closure on it within a couple hours. And with that, Madam Chair, I would turn it over to Dr. Masterson to talk about the agenda item, which is the school safety plans.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, School Committee, Dr. Thornton. Each year by November first, the school committee is tasked with approving the school safety plans. Each year, I work with the superintendent's office to update them and the principals of each building to identify their crisis teams and update their plans. We've submitted them to you for review ahead of time, and with tonight's passage, I can then send them off to the round state police, and we are going to be well in advance of the November first deadline. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Masterson. And we did review this in the exec session, and the safety plans, as you can imagine, are not something we just publicly discuss. But are there any comments or questions for Dr. Masterson? Okay. Mr. Collins?
I just want to thank you. I think the, you know, some of the questions, obviously, as Mrs. Friedman pointed out, are sensitive and confidential for safety reasons. But some of the questions we posed you, my impression is that you have thought of just about everything. It's very thorough. It's based on, you know, evidence, best practices in other locations, and working with, in conjunction with law enforcement. It's unfortunate we have to go through this every year, but it's the harsh reality It's unfortunate we have to go through this every year, but it's the harsh reality of just being a public school in the 21st century. So thank you very much for this hard work, in addition to all your other responsibilities as a principal. So thank you. And hopefully, we never need any of these plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I have to say, it's definitely one of the biggest team efforts we can put together. I think that we have a great partner in our municipal safety departments with police, fire, and EMS. And they're actually the ones who trained me, and we've been able to work together on trainings for all of our staff at every building, which I did say we have to work on since we have had so many new hires over the last few years. We really should do a more robust training again. So, but thank you.
Thank you. So we need a motion to approve the updated 2021-2022 school safety plans.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you, Dr. Masterson. Next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve overnight student field trip. Oh, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I'm in the wrong agenda. The next item on the agenda, since we took it out of order, is comments from the public. I am sorry about that. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and there is a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexis Santoro. I live at 22 Windsong Road in Cumberland. I came here tonight to talk about the Windsong Pound Road bus stop, bus number nineteen, in the morning, and the safety of the twenty to twenty-five little kids have to cross the street to get on the bus. Based on the fact that the road is really narrow, it's windy, and there's poor visibility, especially driving from Menderoom where the students have to cross in front of to get on the bus. I was informed today, though, in the late morning, that there is going to be a bus monitor on the bus, which I want to thank you all for. I just hope that that actually takes place. Since earlier this week, I was told there was going to be a bus monitor, then there wasn't going to be a bus monitor, then they were going to move the bus stop, then they weren't going to move the bus stop, then they weren't going to do anything. So just a history on the bus stops, so you know. In 2019, the bus stop was actually moved from that location and moved into the neighborhood on the corner of Windsong and Gold Star because of the safety issue. Last year, although there was less students on the bus, the bus went into the neighborhood, turned around empty, picked up the kids at the same bus stop, but on the Windsong side, so they did not have to cross Pound Road. So as most of you are aware, I did request that the bus monitor be put on the bus, but knowing that there's a shortage of bus monitors, I also had requested that, if that wasn't possible, that the bus turn around into the neighborhood and pick the kids up on the corner Windsong and Pound, the same location, but on the Windsong side, so they did not have to cross the road. I'm glad that finally today I was told there was be a bus monitor. I hope that that continues and does happen. Unfortunately, the fact, how we had to get there today is unfortunate, and the fact that I actually had to go to the press in order to get that happen. Because when I did contact the Superintendent's Office, I was told that somebody yesterday called me to tell me that the Superintendent, in fact, told me that I should get trained to be a bus monitor and be the bus monitor for the bus, for that stop. If the Superintendent hadn't actually called me specifically, which I would expect or would hope you would do in the future, instead of, I see someone in your office to call me to state that, you would learn that I'm a single professional working mom of a first grader and a second grader, that in addition to that, I've been in the middle of undergoing breast cancer procedures, and I don't have time to be, I don't have time always to be at the bus stop due to my work and due to the stuff that have kept going on in my life. And it's unfortunate that that was the response I got regarding a safety concern rather than saying that there was something we can look at and work forward towards. As most of you are aware, there is a Rhode Island general law in place that indicates that a bus monitor has to be on a school bus for every student that's on, every bus that's an elementary school bus in the state of Rhode Island. Although there is a shortage, it does give a variance that can be approved on ride. I was informed later today that there was a variance given, but that was actually pick up each kid, house to house, stop to stop, which obviously is very time-consuming, and it's not what I was recommending or asking for. When the Superintendent, besides that, indicated that it was a safety issue, he said that he went to the stop himself. He and Durham did not find that it was a difficult stop or dangerous stop to be at, and that it would take too much time in order to the bus, empty bus, to drive around the neighborhood and pick up the children, because it would take four minutes extra, and they would be late for school. I don't see how that would make that late for school, if that's a possibility, in the fact that the same bus, bus nineteen, goes from the middle school, which drops off the middle school kids, and specifically today dropped them off at seven forty, gets to the school at seven forty-two AM, and they don't leave the kids off the bus until seven fifty. Unless the bus has unscheduled stops, not on the bus schedule, or there's a contractual, I'm sorry, contractual break that's required of the bus driver, it does not take thirty-nine minutes to get from the middle school to the first stop, which is Windsong and Pound Road. There's plenty of time for that bus to go into the neighborhood, turn around, and pick up the children on the Windsong side of the road.
Ms. Santoro, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we've gone over time.
Okay. I was just going to say that it does get to the school at eight forty-five in the morning too, which gives them another fifteen minutes to get to school on time for school to start. So I'm just hoping, I'm just asking that the monitor be kept on that bus, or that the stop be placed on the Windsong side, so kids don't have to cross the main street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Next item on the agenda is new business. And the first item is discussion under a vote to approve 2021-2022 bus routes. These bus routes have all been shared? Yes, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been reviewing the bus routes, and there have been changes that have been made, and there's a lot more to be done. The list that we had was given last week, and it's over a week old. And while we received the new bus routes yesterday, or I'm sorry, maybe on Tuesday evening, I'm not sure what date it is today, they do not have the details that I think that we were looking at in what we had finally received, and that's the number of students at each bus stop and what is actually occurring. I believe Dr. Thornton had been working with Durham to get those numbers so that we know exactly how many are being picked up at each stop versus how many were anticipated. So at this time, I would move that we table this until we can get more accurate information from Durham with all the updates that are being done. Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Smith makes a motion to table this for tonight, the approval of the 2021-2022 bus routes. Is there a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay, second by Mrs. Rogalski for discussion. Any discussion? Dr. Thornton, do you want to?
No.
No.
Is there a time limit that we have to respond?
Yeah, that's, it's a good question. Is there a time limit for when we need to approve this?
By policy, it is thirty days. And I did speak with the Chair of Policy about that issue the other evening, and he stated that we could still push that back if we've taken a vote to do that, that it's not going to cause any issues in that often that this has occurred, that the thirty days, because of all the adjustments that occur at the beginning of the school year.
Okay. Mr. Collins.
Are these bus routes drawn up as a result of, like, maximizing usage of the bus? So, you know, we don't have forty kids on one bus and then two on another? I don't know if somebody can answer that. Dr. Thornton?
No, the question was about the bus routes and the potential to table it. Are these bus routes drawn up with the intention, not just of speeding up certain bus routes, but maximizing bus usage? So we are using forty kids on one bus, so on and so forth? I think it's both, and also, keep in mind, you're buying a bus for the day, so you may have a full run, and the first run, second run might be not as full, but yeah, you're trying to maximize for the whole life of the bus, for the whole day, over all the runs, elementary, middle, high.
So consistent with Ms. Smith's comment, I think it would be just to make sure, just to document it, we know how many kids are at each bus, and we know it for sure. So when we roll this out, not only are we saying it, but we're also showing through numbers that...
Do you want the actuals?
Yeah, and then actuals, and then we also, if there has to be any sort of variance, just like we have with classroom numbers, we know where we can move kids in and move kids out and shift around, bus stops, et cetera, et cetera. So instead of, we can resolve this once and for all, so we're not doing this again two months from now.
We can do that.
Okay. Mrs. Rogalski?
So I'm just looking ahead, and tonight, we're also going to be visiting the E2 transportation policy. And since that does change the walking distances, obviously, that is going to affect the numbers as well. So whatever we approve tonight would just then have to be redone, I'm guessing, if that were to be approved and if the numbers changed. I mean, it's having the high school distance, for example. So I'm just kind of wondering how much that would change.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So the policy, yes, the policy we will be voting on tonight will have distance changes. However, there is a bus shortage, or drivers, and we are aware of that. So the policy also addresses the fact that we may not be able to implement immediately. So I would anticipate that we will not see any new buses added for some months. And there's, you know, I think last meeting Durham talked that they have twenty-three or twenty-seven new employees that have come on board that are getting the proper training and getting their CDL licenses and things like that so they can drive. But that's going to take time. So we definitely could be kicking this down the road before we actually are able to offer the full service.
So let's, we will be talking about that agenda item later in the agenda. So we have, right now, we have a motion to table the approval of the 2021-2022 bus routes. We have a second for discussion, and actually, we can move ahead with this. So we have a motion to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. Okay. Now, the next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve overnight student field trip, Athletic Great American Cross Country Festival in Cary, North Carolina. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, Coach Carpenter is here tonight just to say a few words about the trip. So I'll turn it over to the coach.
Good evening. So I suppose I will just give you a little bit of background as to why we want to go. In our sport, it really, you know, it's the nature to want to experience as many different courses, cross-country courses, competitions as possible. Traveling is really just a natural part of that process. We travel many, many times, many, many years, over the years. The truth is, this particular race is a very high-level race. It's quite a large platform. It's probably one of the most sought-after races at this time, and it's always been a long-term goal to attend this race. I think the athletes that are on the team, last year, we wanted to go. That was our goal to go. COVID interrupted that process, as we can, as we know. And then this year too as well. I believe they can compete at this high level, and so that was the goal to go. And it's not, definitely not something that we could do every year. It is, again, a very high-level, high-level competition, and I feel they really deserve the opportunity to go there, so.
Madam Chair, if I could. So Coach Carpenter, we talked earlier this week, is certainly aware of the out of New England piece we talked about earlier?
Correct. Yep. Yes.
And the students know about that as well?
Yes. Yes.
Any comments or questions? Mrs. Feather?
There. So we had asked, I believe we had asked the other team that wanted to travel as well, just how they were funding this and everything, so I wanted to just be consistent.
Sure. There is no funding coming from the Cumberland School Department. This was all parent-paid for. Everything is being, nothing is coming from the Cumberland School Department, not the race fee, not the transportation.
Thank you. Thanks. And actually, so when you mentioned it's parent-paid for as well, was, is there opportunity for students who might not have the means to be able to travel as well?
Well, we, there is a booster club, so if there's any financial, you know, need, it's always open to take care of that through the booster club, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
You can't see, but I'm smiling.
I know, okay. Me too.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
So if I read the application correctly, parents are handling room and board transportation. So I would guess the majority of the student, the athletes are flying down?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So there's obviously federal guidelines with aviation, all that other stuff. But one of the issues, as we had with the previous meeting, is that students who are unvaccinated going to North Carolina, I believe, which is a red state, transmission, they're going to miss school. So, and I think we had this discussion, or the potential that they would miss school. So, you know, they are student athletes, student first, but was this, and I'll ask the same question I asked Coach Crowley last week. Did you go on this trip? Have you been on this trip before?
No.
Okay. So, and you weren't unable to go on the trip last year, I'm assuming, correct?
It was a goal last year, correct? It was on our draft schedule, I guess you could say, until, you know, it was not offered.
So this has been on your radar for some time, so runners right now who are seniors, this is their last chance to make this trip?
Well...
Yeah.
Essentially. If you're a senior, yes. If you're a junior, and we have a strong level team again next year, which I would love to be standing here before you next year to tell you that my sophomores are advancing, they're doing very, very well, so I would love to say that we're here again next year attending that.
So we obviously approved the trip to Maine last week, but that was within the New York, the New England region. But I would just, you know, I will support this because it's a unique opportunity, and, you know, parents, parents are paying for their own kids' transportation, so, and they're clearly behind whatever the vaccination status their children have. So if parents are safe with their own child going to North Carolina to run, who am I to say otherwise? You know, if it passes, I wish you good luck, and just be, remind the students that they still have time to be vaccinated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. And I just want to add to that and make sure, the policy, as it was written last week, and the update with all of New England now included, the students are aware of that? They've brought that policy home to the parents, or, you know, I don't know how you can control that, but I don't think we can stress enough that we really hope that the parents understand if there is an unvaccinated child, that they will quarantine when they come back. And I just want to make sure that the parents understand that before...
Yeah, it's my understanding that the parents have received all that information, and so therefore, they understand the steps afterwards as they would for all other situations. So, I mean, I know they've all received it. I know we understand it as a whole. So I would expect that it is followed from my control, yeah.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
And we...
Mrs. Feather, go ahead. I was just going to add on that. So the quarantine is not only from school, it's from extracurriculars, it's from work, it's from everything. So practices, other meets and everything as well.
Correct. Yes. We've had students before in quarantine, and it's, same concept.
Same protocol.
Protocol.
Better word, yes.
Yes.
And I know we talked about this last time in looking at Mrs. Duncanson with Mr. Crowley about proof of vaccination. So in order for someone to not have to quarantine, they would have to show their proof of vaccination. I don't know if that's happening with the coach, if the coach is having the students show them, or the athletic director, or how do we...
You talked last time about the AD, Madam Chair, I believe.
Yeah. So these students would then have to show their vaccination to the athletic director. Okay. Make sure we're clear. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So I...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trip.
Mr. Collins?
Field trip, the athletic trip, sorry.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, a quick correction and a point of order. I said earlier, BF Norton, grade one, was the one in quarantine. It's grade three. That was my error. And second, our attorney has a point of order for us.
Oh, goodness.
So item J27, the extracurricular immunization requirements for out-of-state travel, I do not believe that should be read into the record for purposes of this meeting. I'll defer to committee members, you know, who can, you know, bring it forth if they'd like to, but it did not, there was no action taken in the policy Subcommittee on that, so...
So does that mean we would strike it from our agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. And do we, we wouldn't vote on that? Okay, and do we, we wouldn't vote on that?
We just wouldn't, yeah.
We, it shouldn't have been here?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. So then, we would strike from the agenda, item G-1? Okay.
Right.
Retroactively, after we've already amended?
Well, we can take a vote to amend, to reflect that it should not have been read.
I had it as a, that we took no action, that we could vote to continue no action.
Right, so if we, if we strike this from the agenda, then we need to vote on the amended agenda?
We will need to vote again on the amended agenda in terms of proper procedure. I apologize.
And we can do that right now? Or do we do that?
You can.
All out of order.
Well, we accepted the agenda, but anyone, you know, we can move to amend the agenda at the chair's pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to strike item. Strike item J-27 from the record, the reading of the new policy of J-27 extracurricular immunization requirements for out-of-state travel, stricken from the record. Think I did that right, all right.
Okay, Mr. Collins makes a motion. Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. Okay. Now back to our regularly scheduled program. Now we're back to new business, item D. Discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2021-2022 school year. Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins and Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve purchasing resolutions. And I will hand this over to you, Mr. Collins.
All right, I want to thank everybody who's staying for the resolutions. All right, first up, we have, tell those people to come back. This is the best part of the meeting. All right, so first up, I have SCPR-09-2021-60, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment number nine to ADS Construction Incorporated of East Providence, Rhode Island, for continued work on Phase One of the high school security project in an amount not to exceed $101,519.85. This is coming out of the eight, the town master lease. This passed Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve Resolution SCPR-09-2021-60. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero.
Next up, we have SCPR-09-2021-61, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize payment number four for $153,189.98 to ADS Construction Company of East Providence, Rhode Island, for Phase Two indoor portion of high school security project. This is going to be coming out of the school's capital reserve account. This passed Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-61. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes zero, we, passes five to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-09-2021-62, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payments for HV Collins Construction of Providence, Rhode Island, for invoice number one for school complete, for work completed at JJM Cumberland Hill Elementary School as of August 31, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $433,37,973. This is coming out of the $79 million bond. This passed Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-62. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith and Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero.
Next is SCPR-09-2021-63, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a contract for Miracle Method surface refinishing of Providence, Rhode Island, for refinishing and painting tile in the CHS Transitional Building Gymnasium in an amount not to exceed $20,000. The Subcommittee voted to table this due to some concerns about the financial impact, although it's only $20,000, based on some other decisions we made. And Mrs. Smith pointed out the, the timing of it, just the, the paint and the smell and just the airflow as we go into the cold weather. So we've not shut the door to this, we have only tabled it for this evening. So we quite possibly will be revisiting this down the road soon. Next, I'm sorry, it's tabled. Next, we have SCPR-09-2021-64, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment for Colliers International of Providence, Rhode Island, for owner's representation services for the month of August 2021 in an amount not to exceed $33,648.05. This is coming out of, yes, $79, $79 million master lease. This passed Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-64. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero.
Next is.
I'm sorry, should we be taking a vote to table number 63?
I had a question about that, too. Do we need to table it? Do we need to? Item four, Mr. Collins, the fiscal Subcommittee tabled it. But it's on this agenda. Do we need to vote to table it on this agenda?
Yes, we should.
Okay, mea culpa, I would like to go back, and I would like to retroactively motion to table SCPR-09-2021-63. I'd like to motion to table that building tile resurfacing from Miracle Method.
And I will second.
Okay, so Mr. Collins makes a motion to table SCPR-09-2021-63, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero.
A.
Back to number six, I think.
Yeah, six, six. Now is SCPR-09-2021-66. A resolution empower.
Sixty-five.
Sorry, sixty-five. Sixty-five? Dash sixty-five. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize payment number three to E&amp;E Systems of Canton Mast for unit ventilators installation of 25 unit vents at the CHS main building in an amount not to exceed $235,169.03. This leaves a balance of $48,901.81 remaining on the $852,591.13 contract. Hope you guys are writing that down. This is coming out of the $79 million bond. This passed Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-65. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it, five to zero.
Next is SCPR-09-2021-66, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize payment number three to E&amp;E Systems of Canton Mast for unit ventilators installation of 21 unit vents at the CHS Transitional Building in an amount not to exceed $199,609.71. This leaves a balance of $38,812.06 remaining on the $657,769.10 contract. And this is coming out of the $79 million bond. This passed Fiscal Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-66. All in, I have a second. Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero.
Next, we're getting closer. a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment for HV Collins of Providence for invoice number two for work completed at Cumberland High School Swing Space as of August 31, in an amount not to exceed $852,903. This leaves a balance of $1,300, $1,387,630 remaining on the $2,401,734 dollar contract. And this is obviously coming out of the $79 million bond. This passed Fiscal Subcommittee Two to Zero, pending the fixing of a typographical error. But I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-67. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero.
And finally, SCPR-09-2021-68, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to award a contract to Finav Engineering and Testing of Natick, Massachusetts, for materials and special inspections at JJM Cumberland Hill Elementary School for $24,700. This will be coming out of the $79 million bond. This passed Fiscal Subcommittee Two to Zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-68. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye. And if I could just add.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Passes five to zero.
And if I could just add, if you enjoyed that, good news, because we have a bunch of resolutions coming, according to Mr. Pignano, where we may necessitate a special meeting just to, so we're not here till midnight. So we may have to find time, and as a full committee. That way, we won't have to go Subcommittee in this, because there's a bunch of construction bonds coming. So there will be a night dedicated to resolutions, so.
You enjoyed this, come back for more.
To be determined, mark your calendars, Katie.
Will there be pizza involved?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote on amended policies. The first one is E2 transportation policy. And Ms. Smith, I'll let you open this one up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy and Subcommittee, Policy and Procedure Subcommittee met on the 14th of September to discuss our transportation policy. And a large portion of that had to do with the distances in which we have calculated for busing and non-busing students. Mr. Fierello had done an extensive amount of work on this over the past few years, and delays had been taken due to Covid, and it was put off. However, we have found this year, especially as we go into the Southern District of the town with sidewalks under construction and other things occurring with construction down on Broad Street, there have been a lot of problems with the distances that we've had. And we've looked at everything, and we've decided to amend the policy. And this did pass Three to Zero with the Subcommittee to amend the policy so that we are changing the distances of the grades in what we are going to consider to be walkers. It does align with many in the state and across the nation with all the research that Mr. Fierello did. And what that would do is it would take the kindergarten through fifth grade, and it would put all of those elementary students at a half-mile for a walking distance. I believe it's at three-quarters of a mile now. Grade six through eight, instead of being one and a half miles, it would go down to three-quarters of a mile. And grades nine through 12, instead of being two miles, it would go to one mile. We do recognize that it's going to be about six to seven extra buses that will have to come into our budget. And it was estimated at a light level, we have not done a final level with, with Mr. Pignano yet, but it does anticipate to be half a million dollars on our budget. With this in mind, though, I do want to say the biggest area of impact is going to be the high school. And the miles have been driven, and what this does is the one mile comes out roughly to the Nate Whipple Manville Hill roadside, where students past that would be bused. And it also brings it down to just outside of Cumberland Crossing right before you get to the 295 overpass. So it would allow them also to be bused. If we were to stick with what we have now, students that live down near Davenport's Restaurant, and students that are past Andrews Bistro and that plaza, as we also know as the old Benny's Plaza, they, right now, are walkers. And it's, it's a large group of students that are impacted by that, not only walking on those roads and in those areas, but not having any clean sidewalks, having to carry all of their things and not having lockers in use. It's adding even more time. And if you look at Google's Maps and things like that, it already has them at a 40-minute walk. And that's not including the weight of the backpack or sporting events or everything else that the students take, plus the poor roads. So I would say that although this will be a hit to our budget, I do think that for the benefit of our students and for the safety and well-being of them, we do need to make an adjustment, and I would recommend passage to the full committee.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to pass the amended policy, E2 transportation policy. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Feather, for discussion? Mr. Collins?
Now, so where are we looking for the financial hit now? What do you think is going to be the biggest hit financially if this passes?
That is something that we have to delve down into. As I mentioned earlier, and as I mentioned again now, what is going to happen is we are not in a position at this time, nor is Durham, to offer those buses to us. So while we're amending this policy, there's a very good chance that we wouldn't even be able to implement it at this time. And the policy does have that clause. And we're to cover that for this year especially, until we do it. So the cost will vary for this first year, and then after that time, it is a heavy conversation that needs to be had with Mr. Pignano and how we could find the funding.
Yeah, my concern is that, depending on the cost, if we're talking something exorbitant, I mean, we probably need, we probably have to pass it through fiscal, wouldn't we? To, you know, depending on the cost, so I mean, without, it's kind of like, you know, I, it's one of those things, the spirit of the policy is good, but there's a lot of financial.
Impact.
There's a huge financial impact, especially with the growing population, you know, any other things we have. So I mean, I don't feel comfortable passing it only from the financial point of view. I'm not disputing the, the spirit of the policy, but there's real dollar amounts here, and I think, you know, that's where I'm at right now, so.
Okay, we have a few comments, Mrs. Feather? Or Mrs. Rogalski?
So we did discuss during, during the policy meeting that there were going to be additional costs, or there, there could be additional costs, well, there will be additional costs eventually with regard to this. One of the biggest reasons to pass it right now would be that it also does allow the superintendent to make additions to buses if there is room on current buses. So is that the right wording, Carrie? I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, that is correct, Mrs. Feather. There is a change in modification with that. Also, giving the superintendent a little bit more leniency to make decisions to allow students to be added to buses. There have been circumstances where, under the present contract, or the present policy, he's able to do that, too, in a short-term basis while bringing it to us. However, this will give him more of that immediate response instead of having to wait on any votes or any discussions with us.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Rogalski, did you have a comment?
Okay.
Just to that point, yeah, on page of the policy on top. If you did pass that piece of the policy, I would then have latitude. If someone's 2.1 miles away, but there's room on the bus, I can then get those folks on the bus. There are several things we're looking at now. I must have a shortlist of maybe, say, 17 situations where I could help those folks if they're just outside of the current zone, space permitting. So that, that's, that's a good thing. In terms of page one, I would just say, I think it's a very, very well-intended policy. But I do worry about just rolling it out, if it's seven buses, if it's 10 buses. Durham can model it for us, it'll take probably a few months. And we'll know more about what it would be. Certainly, a very well-intended, I just worry when you're wrestling with what to fund next year, how do you reconcile the walking distance with other things you'll get, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
To Mrs. Feather's point, I, I would, I would be very comfortable with a standalone policy that just gave Dr. Thornton some leeway, if we want to work that in. But again, the fiscal impact with, the unknown is just, you know, we don't want to be stuck with something we can't fund.
Mrs. Rogalski?
I, I agree with Mr. Collins. I'm really hesitant to pass a policy where we don't.
I'm really hesitant to pass a policy where we don't know what the financial impact is going to be when we can't, you know, afford what we have now adding and not knowing whether it's going to be one number or another. I'm really leery of passing a policy, which I agree has great intent. I love the idea. I think it's a fantastic policy. But passing something without knowing the fiscal responsibility for it, to me, it seems irresponsible, and I'd rather wait until we had more solid numbers, especially since it's something that could go into effect quickly.
Madam Chair? Mrs. Feather?
So, one thing that we discussed again during the policy meeting as well, and I know that Mr. Fiorello felt strongly about this as well, and I do too, is that our policy should be based on student safety, not on finances. Because it's not safe for the students to be walking from Davenport's. It's not safe for our students to be walking from where they're walking the other way, down by the Dunkin' Donuts or the old Benny's. And this could solve that problem right now with Dr. Thornton being able to make some, you know, to make some... have some flexibility with getting some folks on the bus, especially when not all of the seats on buses are being filled right now. That is another question, though, the fact that, you know, not all the seats on the buses are being filled. I would also question how many buses we will need going forward. There's a potential that this won't be a huge financial hit. And we just don't know. But we also don't know things year to year, and I do believe that we should pass this based on the safety of our students and not how much it will cost.
Mr. Collins?
I would disagree that it would take care of things right now. We have a bus shortage, a bus driver shortage, bus monitor shortage. And, you know, depending on the impact, we may need a fiscal note or something like that. So it's not that we don't want to do it. It's just we don't know, there's too much unknown. We don't have a blank check for transportation. So we have to kind of... we kind of have to iron that out. And then, you know, if we want to give Dr. Thornton leeway, I'd be happy with a special meeting to give him those powers, you know, just to address that temporary thing. So I think the problem is the policy has kind of like two things buried in it. So this is like we see in Washington, they try to pass one bill, and on the end, there's something else, you know, buried in there. And then people say you didn't support the bill. It's, well, it's because it's that weird little thing at the end. No, not that I'm not saying that...
I don't think that was the intent at all.
No, no, it's not weird, but the problem is, we're having two different discussions. Yes, he should have leeway. But what some of us are saying is, we need answers financially. It's not, we don't care about safety. It's we have to be fiscally responsible. So we can do both, but, you know, this policy doesn't give us that as I see it right now.
Right, Ms. Smith? Sorry?
Thank you. And just to address two issues, based upon the estimated amount of students and the tracking that we do have, it has been looked at that there was going to be six to seven buses, and we do think that's probably closer to the maximum level, only because of what Mr. Collins has just said, that not all of these buses are filled, and some of them can have students put on there. So the estimated cost comes from that. It will take a long time to then now run it, have Durham go through it. And if we even look at our contract with Durham, we provide information to them in May for the following school year, and they're not getting things to us and getting all the plans in place until August. Then we're going at least another thirty days before approving. So this will take time to implement, and I agree, we need to find out, to me, the most important thing is, we need to find out where we're going to get the funding from and do all of that. As far as what the actual number is going to be, it will take a long time. And just to the second note, the policy as it is written right now does give the superintendent discretion. So, and I'll read it specifically. "The superintendent retains discretion to modify on a short-term basis or permanent basis eligibility parameters to address unexpected or extraordinary circumstances. The superintendent shall inform the school committee when modifications are necessary." So in this situation, I would think that some of those decisions that he's making could fall under this. But it's the judgment call on the two-point-one miles versus two miles, and I believe, and I think we would need legal counsel just to reconfirm it. I would believe that, based upon how it's written now, he still could continue in those actions.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. So, as I'm reading this, there's discretion to modify eligibility parameters to address unexpected or extraordinary circumstances. And then the rest of the language, where we get into individual, seems to be limiting language. So it really would depend on how one reads those eligibility parameters. If those are eligibility parameters in terms of, you know, groups, or if those can be, if the superintendent would have discretion, pardon me, to, you know, to modify eligibility on an individual basis, if that's what the committee wants him to have. So, you know, that would be my question. I don't know how this policy has been put into practice previously. But as I read it, you know, the amendment is really kind of limiting language on that broader discretion. And so, in that vein, and I wasn't present for the discussions, but I think the policy as it stands, without this amendment, would give the superintendent that discretion to make modifications for eligibility.
So, I would express the same fiscal concerns that have been expressed, and I'm not certain how we move forward with the policy if we don't understand what the true fiscal impact is. But Mr. Pignano, is there anything you would like to add?
Well, a lot of what I was going to say was said by members of the committee, and I do think you need to get a true handle on this with a fiscal note, so you know exactly what the impact would be. And then I would think, you know, when we talk about how we're going to fund it, we all know the budget situation. We have to come up with smoke and mirrors with the mayor each year to pass, to even get our budget, you know, balanced on paper. I would think if you think this is important enough, you would go to the mayor and the town council and see if they want to fund it. Because that's the way it's going to happen. To just pass a policy that we could not fund, I think puts not only you people in a position where we'll say, would you pass a policy for that we can't implement, but also puts the town administration in a little bit of a bind, like, hey, why aren't you giving us the money to pass this? So I would think you'd want to work that out, see if the town has an interest. I mean, we're asking them, you know, there's a number of positions that we're paying through ESSO this year. We're hoping that the town, over the next few years, will fund those positions, make them permanent. So there's going to be a lot of ask coming up for the town. This would be, you know, I commend the committee for wanting to do these things. It's just, you know, to pass a policy that we won't be able to implement is going to be...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pignano. Mrs. Feather, do you?
Yeah, I just, I... I completely understand about the financial concerns. My concern is thinking about the parents and students who have come to us, who have written to us, who have attended our policy meetings, who have reached out to us because they are either enduring a hardship or their child is being asked to walk forty to forty-five minutes with a giant backpack on. If the policy itself, the way it is written right now, will allow Dr. Thornton tomorrow to say, yes, you can go on these buses, then that's fine. But I don't understand why we're putting finances in front of students, in front of student safety.
If I may, sorry. Upon reading this a little bit, you know, more closely, I think there's an or, it's disjunctive. So the second part of that, or to address individual circumstances that warrant an exception at the discretion of the superintendent, that encompasses circumstances that might not otherwise be determined to be unexpected or extraordinary. And so, when... it's not six and one half dozen the other. I think this language does add a... does add to the discretion. So I'm sorry, I'm going to expand on or modify my previous assessment, but this language really would expand the discretion that is afforded to the superintendent to address an individual, you know, kind of on a case-by-case. And, you know, the limiting language puts the restriction on him if there is, you know, the capacity within the existing bus fleet to accommodate that. That triggers his discretion. The discretion doesn't kick in unless that is, you know, that's a predicate for that discretion. So I think, upon reflection, I would suggest to the committee that this is a distinction with a difference. And the policy as written would arguably, you know, unless living, you know, a tenth of a mile outside of the eligibility parameters is deemed to be extraordinary, or, you know, it's not unexpected, Dr. Thornton would not have the discretion in that instance to grant an accommodation.
And we, Madam Chair? Is that Mrs. Feather?
I was just going to say that, yeah, so right now, what we are missing, we are missing the fact that there are, I think he said seventeen students right now, who he could potentially help, literally tomorrow. And, yeah, as Ms. Smith indicated, we, yes, we don't know what the final financial impact of this will be, but, or could be. But again, it's not something that is going to be seen for a little bit of time, which gives us time to start to plan for it.
Mrs. Rogalski?
I do agree that student safety is of the utmost importance. I mean, I'm... we're all parents here. We're all, you know, this is our job, is to keep our students safe. But I think it's, at this moment, if he has, if Dr. Thornton has that ability to approve exceptions, if he can make some of those changes, and I think that might open a whole different can of worms, but if he has that ability, I personally feel that although student safety is of the utmost importance, this is not an emergent, immediate threat, and that's not the right word. I don't know how to explain properly what I'm saying, but it's... I want this policy. I think we all want this policy. However, right now, without knowing, I am not comfortable supporting the passage of the policy until we have more of a grasp. And again, I am in favor of it. I really like it. I think it's a good policy. I think the changes are good. I'm just not comfortable without knowing what the financial impact is going to be. And if we were talking about an immediate danger, not that that's, you know, not that the students are not in danger, but I, you know, we were talking about school safety earlier. If we were talking about something with, something in the schools that was needed, that might be different. But to me, Dr. Thornton has the ability to make changes if he...
Well, I have a question about that.
I don't think he does. I think what Mr. Grove was clarifying is that in the policy as it is, Dr. Thornton does not have the discretion...
I thought that was under the umbrella, after the or.
I couldn't understand.
Right, sorry.
First, he said it was, and then he said it wasn't.
In the current policy that is standing now, not in the policy that we're reviewing, does he have that discretion?
In the current policy, does...
He can make... there are some changes he can make if it's to address unexpected or extraordinary circumstances. But he does not have the discretion to address individual...
He does not.
...circumstances that warrant an exception in his discretion. So if something were unexpected or extraordinary, then he could address it under the current policy. This extends that discretion, only if there's available capacity on the buses, to allow him to address individual situations.
So if the policy, if we didn't have the walking distances changed in the policy, but we added that in to give him more discretion...
Right.
Then that is a way that this policy at some point could go forth, while we also understand, better understand the financial implications of the walking distance piece. So there's two pieces in here.
Correct.
So, but right now, in the current policy, he does not have the discretion really needed or that people are asking for.
Correct.
Ms. Smith?
If I could just elaborate on that a little. I look at this and say, extraordinary circumstances, other circumstances that these students are seeing right now, where due to COVID, they're not having their lockers, they haven't been using lockers for some time, they're carrying all of their books and things back and forth to the schools every day. So to me, that is an addition that probably wouldn't have been done in past years. And just as a side note on this, because I agree, we have to figure out the financial part of this. And during our meeting at policy, we were given data that we felt comfortable had been researched, even though it wasn't found where the funding was going to come from. We knew what we were looking at on a higher level of probably what the maximum was going to be. So that did lead to some of the decisions. You know, there are a lot of students that are impacted, primarily, again, high school. Most of those students are north of Manville-Hill Road and McCourt Middle School. Some of the other schools are already working fine. And then, as we know, North Cumberland, nobody is deemed eligible to walk to that school. So, you know, we have two major schools that are being impacted by this. So I'm happy to go back and do an edit to this policy, and hopefully, Mr. Fiorello can call a meeting to do that, where we can change the wording on the superintendent and add that addition, and then go back on the mileage and start getting the charts and data together that we need to see what every quarter of a mile change would be and what we would look at.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Feather? Two quick things to add to that. Thank you, Ms. Smith. One, we did also talk about, a little bit about the question of equity. Because as Ms. Smith mentioned, at North, they're, you know, they're on a busy road. There are no sidewalks. So no one is deemed eligible to be a walker. Whereas at McCourt, they have to walk further distances because there are sidewalks. And so, it does bring up the question of equity in some cases, and that's something that I'm highly concerned with. The other piece to that, that I also just wanted to mention, is that in terms of, you know, we keep talking about finding the money, right? Like, so where are we going to find the money for this? Is there ever a time that something comes up where we have to find the money for something? There is. There are always times that things come up where we have to find the funding for something. The question is, do we care enough about student safety to be able to pass it?
Mr. Collins?
All right. So I'd like to preface my remarks by, I'd like to get away from the, if you don't agree with me, I don't care about student safety piece. And the second part is the issue of equity. What do you mean by equity? Is it like, we're discriminating against the McCourt kids because, is that what you're implying?
I'm not implying that we're discriminating against the McCourt kids, and I'm not also saying that you don't care about student safety. I'm sorry if it came out that way. What I'm saying is that we, right now, the students in North Cumberland have more access to busing than the students at McCourt.
And the reason that is, is because it's so widely populated, so it's dispersed differently. McCourt is in a larger, like a concentrated neighborhood. So I used to live in the McCourt neighborhood. You can walk there because it's in the neighborhood. NCMS is on a main road, there's no sidewalks, and people don't live all around NCMS. People have to go all the way up Burnt Swamp, they have to go all the way down Abbott Run. So I think it's a moot point.
I understand what you mean, but I almost purchased a house right on Nate Whipple, where, you know, my kids, I would have probably had them walk to the school because it's less than a mile within the school. But, right on Nate Whipple, but it's deemed because it doesn't have sidewalks. So I don't think it's that it's all... I don't think that it's all because it's widely dispersed. I think it's also because there are no sidewalks on that area.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Just as a point of note, I do believe that that has to do with the mileage and the driving mileage on the road as well. It's not just about... It's not just about the sidewalks not being on Nate Whipple Highway to deem it ineligible for walking or to be a non-safe walking route. It's the same that we're seeing with the Abbott Run Valley and a windy road. It's not eligible for walking, and probably some of the other roads that have been discussed.
So, we have a motion to pass this in a second on the table right now, and Ms. Smith also made comments about, we talked about, other revisions to the policy that could happen. We have a motion in a second. So we would have to vote on that as it stands right now. I know Ms. Smith just said something about maybe retracting, but we have to vote on what's there, what's out here. So, we have a motion to approve the amended policy, E2 transportation policy. We have a motion by Ms. Smith and a second by Mrs. Feather. So we're going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. The motion does not pass on a four-to-one vote. And I think there's plenty of feedback from tonight to look at how we might move forward with this.
Yeah, it's clear we have to expedite a rewritten policy based on what we said. We need to give the superintendent the authority he needs to address this issue, and any other issue that'll pop off in this, pop off in this clearly unpredictable situation, the third, fourth week of school, and I think that's something we should, the policy subcommittee should do sooner than later.
Yes.
As soon as next week.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, am I allowed to address something?
Yes, Mrs. Feather. And I would invite anyone to come to the policy subcommittee meeting. We hammered out a lot of things. We amended this policy during the policy subcommittee meeting, so I would definitely invite other members to come, and you can't talk, but you can talk during public comment.
The next item on the agenda is discussion or vote, and/or vote on amended policy, B3, meeting procedures and election of officers. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This policy is an amendment as well, and it primarily is concentrating on the public comment time and putting some procedures around public comment. While we have always said that each speaker has three minutes to speak, that's all we ever had in the policy. This policy update now will recognize the importance of having that communication with the public. We are looking to set a one-hour time limit, a 60-minute time limit on public comment. However, we also added the language in there that at any time, the school committee can, by majority, vote extend or stop, or not stop.
Shorten or-
Shorten, thank you. Sorry, Katie, I forgot your word. So extend or shorten the time of the comment period, because, of course, ideally, we're never going to want to stop our public and hearing from the public, but at the same time, it also helps us to adjust if the same topic is being discussed, maybe by 50 different speakers, that we're able to gather information at a sooner time.
So that's the big change on that, and I would make motion to pass this amendment. Okay. So Ms. Smith makes a motion to pass amended policy, B3, meeting procedures and election of officers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
With just one discussion, again-
Hold on, hold on, we didn't second for discussion.
Okay.
Can we, can we do that, Mr. Groves?
Can you second for discussion?
Yeah, it wasn't seconded for discussion, but can she second it for discussion now?
Just a point-
Because it-
We can-
It's just a point to reference, to make sure that they have the right policy.
I think a point of order is appropriate.
Okay. So the point of order is that, originally, this was proposed at 45 minutes, and it was changed to one hour. So the policy that you should be looking at is the updated one-hour policy. Okay, because it's different in both folders.
Sixty minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve amended policy, B3, meeting procedures and election of officers by Ms. Smith, a second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote on the first reading of new policies. But the first item under this is, has been stricken from the agenda. Okay. The next item is G21, non-contracted slash at-will employees. So this is a discussion, it's not a vote, it's only the first reading of the new policy. So if there's any discussion on this, we can have this now. It will come back at another time for a second reading, and it will come back for a vote. So if there is any discussion, we can do that now, or we can do that another time. We'll have another chance at it. Did you want to miss anything, Ms. Smith?
Sure. So just, this policy just addresses some of the non-contracted employees that we have, and that actually never had a policy around it. If you recall, a few weeks ago, we did approve the new updated policy for some of those other employees. This addresses substitute teachers, excuse me, bus monitors, lunch aids, some of the assistant nurses or substitute nurses. So it's really just something that we just never had on file and really should.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins?
There are no bills to pay.
Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any school committee comments?
Everyone.
Mr. Collins?
First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Jesus for getting the slide fixed at Garvin. No small feat. People are very happy. Thank you very much. And second, I also want to thank my wife for being married to me for 15 years, because today is my anniversary, and I'm spinning it with all of you. So, and I'm sure she's watching at home with the family. No, she's, she's trying to hunt down that kiddo, whatever, never mind.
I also wanted to thank Mr. Collins for spending his 15th anniversary with us, and also to send-
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, what did I say?
Fifteenth. You just gave him a lot of-
No, I hope, she'll kill me before then, but-
And I send well wishes to Mr. DeMonica and to Mr. Fiorello tonight. Any other comments? School committee comments? Oh, Ms. Smith?
I'd just like to request that we have a geese-crossing sign, so that the geese use the bridge next time, instead of crossing over and blocking traffic in the morning. Maybe we can work on that.
Next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. Dr. Thornton, we don't have executive session?
None, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. The next item is adjourned. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned at 8:51 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.